We'll be here, but. Chris, because she has. And. On the agenda are the approval of the minutes for. Before, yeah. I thought they were good. I didn't find it as a very significant mistake as the last time, except my name was Michelle.
A move we approve.
I abstain, I wasn't.
So.
You can second.
No, you can second it.
I'm sufficient for purposes of a quorum. I just can't vote, I'm not going to vote.
So all in favor?
All in favor of. Let me say, you're recording this for.
Yes.
So Harold made a motion to approve and I. Favor. You and Jim abstained because he wasn't at the meeting.
And Chris's meeting.
Chris, yes, Chris is. And that's your department reports.
Chief. Good evening. Fire Department has been relatively quiet. Did have a call for a water rescue the other day. Fortunately, it was fast term going on. Good quick rescue of the kayaker that did not have a PF. PF or some flotation device. Like Jack. Good reminder of their water still fifty fifty-five degrees, so it's still a bit cold. Knocked you out really quick in a few minutes. He was fortunate, it was a fast fisherman nearby, so I can go on after. We're able to rescue him. I'm gonna go back just last month, just. Two weeks ago. In the past month, as you know, the fire department went to the National Fire Academy. We had a great time. Weekend of training. A lot of us learned, learned a few good things, remember back to our friendship. We had about thirty firefighters across the way. It was nice to hook up with some other colleagues. Recent train the past month included rooftop operations as well as operation brush fires, brass fires, which. People have been talking. We've been very fortunate in our area. We just kind of skip over that. Fire danger. Few days, plus three day. We never saw a plus four, plus five. Fire danger. So we're almost out of the woodworks in that regard. Still, still a dry in the woods, but. At least the grass is growing pretty good. And last week. We had another animal rescue, rescued an eagle this time. We got a call, it was down on San Juan, which is part of the Comalakes. And we just went over there, commandeered a small John boat, helped paddle out. Person with a net that netted the eagle that had a broken wing. And it was on an island just a short distance, almost quite beautiful pond where the causeways. That little island left. And we rescued him, he's still recuperating and we're gonna release him shortly. Once he's ready to fly again. I want, Julie's not here, but I wanted to thank her for. Put together that presentation on the eighteen eighty-eight fire here in downtown Monmouth that took out a big portion of the downtown. Between Maple and Pleasant Street, along that side of Main Street. I wanna say thirty, over thirty people attended that, so well attended. We had several fire departments. Pretty interesting to hear the history. And of course, that preceded the fire department that was formed in nineteen oh three. So I just wanted to thank Julie for putting that together. Next week, the fire department's gonna be doing pit testing for our SCV events. Do that anyway, about thirty of us that are SCV qualified. And a couple of things I wanna highlight coming up, put on the calendar. We are gonna have a Memorial Day breakfast on Monday. I don't have all the details. I am gonna try and coordinate a parade, but I have not gotten touch with American Legion, yeah, so I wanna be careful. I'm sure we'll do one, I just gotta work out the logistics as far as the timing. You know, sometimes seven years, they wanna do ten thirty, eleven for their memorial. I wanna make sure they're doing one first, right?
Well, American Legion of Monmouth only has one act.
That's why I'm cautious.
I just talked to.
Did they mention anything about doing a memorial?
No.
You know what time the breakfast is gonna be, Dan?
I would say seven to ten, but I shouldn't.
Okay, then no.
Plan on eight to ten. I'm in trouble with these elderly members who are saying seven and. Typically, it's seven to ten. And the last thing I got is just the sixth annual one with each party. Full swing. We had this past week where we said no. Why, I'm just by the sponsorship letter, so. Sponsored in that's. And. We are still going forward with the event at that location despite the drawdown of the lake. I understand the dam is looked at, engineered and all that kind of stuff. So even if the lake sees a drawdown, we're still gonna have a lot. Perhaps, okay, twenty that we might have a beach instead of a shore.
What day is that, Dan?
That's gonna be Saturday, July. That's all I get.
Just a, just, just a comment, the dinner was great and I was very happy to see Chief Pollard. Get, get his new book. Yeah, books, the very big book, cause he's, you know, he's getting older. So it was really good.
Yeah, but we did have our angle taken thanks to poll either. We had about a hundred people in attendance to come on fishing game club. Thanks to Mike for allowing us to observe, so.
Oh, Dan.
Good evening. Just a few things. I was able to order and install replacements. Hope it will, we'll see in the future. As far as the dam. Main Bridge Management on Monday, they were mailing out the engineers' assessment recommendations. As they received the mail. Once we got that back, we'll have some information on our next steps. Meantime, the gate is just being held wide open. And obviously, the springtime is fighting us to level down, but. So we have the document, which we're just doing this fresh recommendation, which is a good one. Gates wide open. And. Assess from there on a daily basis. Because I heard it mentioned just before the meeting started, I have a contact, any contacts? Pan Am Railways about their culvert. And they are working with us to coordinate whether if they open that culvert and how they do it to try and control water flow. Well, I don't know personally, but as I've been told, when that's open, the lake can rise dramatically very quickly, so we're working with them. See. Water for the one seventeen Academy building, at this point, we're just waiting on the contractors to schedule. They understand it's a priority for us, they're working with us. I hope we get back to them for the week, so. My hope is that the next, like, board meeting and before that, it'll be back up. And on, on the contractors. That's all I have.
What happened with the dam?
There's issues at the dam itself, there's a. Quite large sinkhole opened up around the gate.
What did Inspector say?
He said a lot, but the only thing he said that day he was here was, I recommend you open the gate all the way and then it's reported before it's done.
We hope to have it by the end of the week.
They were, they were seeing some silk exfiltration from around the dam, which means the water's getting in and going around it.
Underneath it or something.
We shut the gate fully when he was here and there was still. There was still so. And the sinkhole. We were able to measure it and. We thought it was only three feet deep or so, once we measured it, it was actually almost seven feet deep. So it's very far down, so.
Answer a question, if it's drawn down, let's say three feet. Launch, still gonna be usable.
I don't have the experience to tell you, based on, there would be, I'd be asking people who have been around the lake for a long time to level well.
I talked to Wendy, Wendy walked out and she walked out two feet. So on herself, she wasn't at the end of the ramp, but we're very close to the end of the ramp. She said you probably could, but there are rocks right at the end of the ramp that they could not move. So, yeah, somebody's gonna have to flag the rock, say, in fact, the rock could be blown enough.
It depends on what kind of boat you're launching. I mean, fast boats probably be able to launch, I've watched in some pretty shallow water, but somebody that's drafting more than. A foot and a half would probably have a problem.
What about the docks? The dock's gonna be out of, out of the water or they.
I would think the end of the dock will still be in the water, but, cause the, the end of the docks right about where the concrete ends. So, and the concrete, you actually drop off a little bit from the end of the concrete, so I. I mean, we. Yeah, I, I think, I think people, most people will be able to watch. Especially if they're, you know, aluminum fourteen, sixteen foot aluminum fishing boats and stuff.
It's everybody's dock in the lake and.
Yeah, exactly. Right, cause if it's down three feet, everybody on Dave's side, there's no, there's two and a half, three feet of water right there, so.
I was just saying that.
But.
I'll just ask the assessor for money back, that's all.
Earlier than. Just tie him off, maybe we'll help extend the dock.
Might be what I'd have to do.
And I was thinking, I would suggest that we use those for that.
Well, when we get the report, we see the report, then we'll see if the, the engineer is recommending that we build a coffer. To, to just take the dam out of play while it gets fixed. If that happens, then the level might be able to come up a little bit, it's, we gotta see what he says. I, I would expect he'll recommend something like building a coffer. In, 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 you know. He thinks it's in that bad a shape, cause you don't want it to fail.
Can we get money to do that?
It's gonna come from somewhere, right, if it has to be done, it has to be done. No, there's no, there's no, there's no fund to fix the dams, depending what we have to do.
There is a, a bond program that we've applied to.
Well, we would have to, we would have to have a special town meeting at this point to authorize one, but yes.
Sure, well, I mean, it's not really on the agenda, but while we're on the subject. By the time we would be able to get anybody to do whatever it is we're gonna need to do, we'd be past the, the town meeting day anyway. So my only concern would be if there are immediate necessary mitigation methods, like, uh, and measures that are necessary, like building a coffer dam. To, to shield the existing dam from a complete blowout. Then we'd have to look at what we can pull from the undesignated fund balance to, to get those measures done and then get the appropriation approved.
You would actually have to use money from some other account, you can't spend the undesigned fund balance without approval of the citizens of town.
That's true.
So you would have to take and pull it from perhaps the. Road fund or, or some other fund. Uh, because the public works is allowed to budget by a small amount.
It's gonna be due in July by the time the contractor to do it anymore.
Well, yeah, right, depending on what needs to be done, if he's, you know, depending on what he says needs to be done.
Cause it may be like an interim step that we can take to shore it up for a while.
Yeah, he, he may. Right. We don't know.
Dave, before you go and think about applying for an abatement, I just want to remind you that a sandy beach has certain additional value.
No, it's the, I'm, I'm only allowed to put a dock out fifty feet and I'll not reach viable water. Without going to the, you know, I, I, I've looked at all these, that heavy now, yeah. Army Corps of Engineers to give permission to go water fifty feet, you think they're gonna give me permission?
And it's Mark Knox saying.
And then everybody else on the way. So it's, it's just you.
What's going on with Wilson Pond Road Beaver Brook?
Yeah, the culvert of Wilson Pond. I have to go ahead, the engineer to do a emergency repair. With a couple of caveats, but it's a can of worms. Waiting on the water to go down more. You know, with that caveat, I could win an attempt to repair to make the culvert structurally sound and the road sound and things to go fine. Or the situation presents, if you could go in and start to get into the repair and it could crumble like a dusty, so. Once the water's down a little more. We'll make another assessment, so I'm kinda waiting on Mother Nature at this point to make the final preparations.
If, if that collapses, then Beaver Brook is out of business.
That's the, right, that's the, that's the hesitation to start putting shovels in the ground on there. Yeah, you know, we don't wanna shut them down right in the season, it's not.
Once the water's down to a point that we can step down and stand. At the culvert, you know, maybe six inches, possibly a foot of water at most, and we can one hundred percent get in there. And make a, a good assessment for that, then I don't know whether we should. Attempt anything or not. When I say we're cleared by the engineers to version repair, we're clear to version repair, repair what's existing and replace it with what's existing. If there is a structural failure or things fall apart, attempting to repair. We are then doing it down the placement process, property process, and that culvert is not adequate for the situation. And it would have to be completely reengineered. It could not be replaced once then, it would not permit it.
So. An engineer, we're gonna go and look.
Yeah, I will, once the water's down, I'll probably call them back. Well, I say probably, I will call them back and ask, well, maybe in a second, we can stand down in the pipe and get a good look. So, yeah. But yeah, with the, with the road being the primary access, we can't ground, we can't ground expanding exponentially. I'm not in any hurry to rush it and at the moment, with their dam down, the water level down, the pressure is off the road. Uh, the only issue is the culvert. So. Is just wait for the water and then make another assessment.
Do we have timelines on stuff like, maybe, oh, I won't ask, I won't ask this now, oh, wait. You have stuff.
Yeah.
So just before we leave, the, the, understand the Beaver Brook issue also, if that. If the water goes outside the culvert and washes the roadway, their road's done anyway.
That's true, right, which is, and they've been very cooperative in letting us. Take their dam apart to get the water level down, they were, they admitted they were unable to get their dam apart to lower the water level. So they allowed us to, which we did. And thankfully, it's taken the pressure off the road, now it's just a matter of the culvert. I think if we leave their dam down, once the culvert is, fingers crossed, repaired, that the road issue should subside for the foreseeable future. If they choose to bring their dam back up, it will be at their own peril.
Right, that's it, the fall was not gonna fail tomorrow, but the road could fail.
Yes.
The dam is to the bog side?
You know, it would, if you are coming down Wilson Pond Road and come to the culvert campground entrance, any of you, their dam is to the right. And not really visible through their, through their bog, and then the bog is to the left.
And what purpose does their dam serve?
Nobody knows, it's, it's a private dam, it's not monitored by County Water, it's not monitored by the town of Wayne. There's nobody giving me any information, it's their own private dam, it's been there for how long it's been there. And they. It's been at their discretion.
I mean, are they trying to maintain the water level for sites they have on the water, or is this just something left over from the past?
And it's, I would say someone from the past and previous owner, his intentions. The new owners have been, like I say, very accommodating in understanding that if we didn't get the water level down, the road would be gone.
Um, the playground at the beach is delayed. We couldn't see it till July at this point, at the earliest, they, they have manufacturing problems, they just don't have it shipped.
Um, I just saw Calvin, I happened to go up by the. One seventeen building, Calvin was up there and I just talked with him, he said that the original vendor he recommended, he called that guy and he said he could have it here in June.
Okay, I didn't.
So Calvin's planning on bringing all the information to Lori tomorrow, so he may wanna check with Lori and see if that's an option we wanna pursue.
Okay, yeah, no, I'll, I'll check and see, I, I, I'm not, I'm not positive if we're contractually obligated or not.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'll look into that, yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Just passing, I'm just happy to see him and that's what he said, so.
And, uh, the Maple Street sidewalk work will begin again on Monday, May ninth. And I, you haven't noticed, the railing is up on the bridge down there too, so the beach sidewalk is all officially. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
So that, so the beach road is all done?
Um, could you give us an update on the status of demolition, just so that everyone can hear?
Okay, so the, the contractor, as you can see, he's done to what he can do. There was, there was some concern about that left side. That, that foundation and about whether he was gonna backfill that, if you've looked over the hole. Um, there's a, there's a bean that comes out of, is a, is a steel bean that comes out of the old building and then it's sitting on a footer. So he couldn't remove that or he didn't feel that he could remove it without potentially damaging the structure that you're trying to save. And because that part of the, because that part of the foundation had been used as an interior room. He couldn't backfill that, that because dirt, there's exposed wood walls in the basement now where they had cut doorways and stuff. So to backfill all that under, underground wasn't really feasible, so what we have now is a hole. So what I'm working on now is to get some kind of a construction fence, you know, those ones that you see that I can block from at least. Where there's a, you know, where there's a fall all the way around at the front of the building and we're gonna work on trying to find somebody that can rent us that. Fencing to try to secure the front of the building so someone doesn't fall over the front any further.
It's a jade length fence?
Yeah, it'll be probably ten or twelve feet, I, you know, the stuff they put around like construction sites, we're gonna put something like that around the front for now until. Until a contractor gets in there and can either secure it or do something with it, just out of safety concerns.
Do you know what the, like, through your timeline for when they're able to start actually doing work on the whole building?
No. I don't think the committee has one, they haven't, they still have to bid out the actual construction, or they have a construction manager, but they haven't bid out where. So.
Who'll do that?
They will. The committee, along with their construction manager and the architect, will have to put together what their final plan is and do it, so I, I, I don't know what their timeline is at this point.
I think, well, I went to the meeting, uh, they had down here actually, and, and they. They, they seemed like they had everything, they, like, prices and everything for. For the three different options that they were thinking of. Some would add on to the existing old building. But I think they're, they're, they realize there's not enough money to do anything beyond using the existing old structure.
Those I believe are the, are the preliminary estimates that the architect put together.
Yeah.
So now that they have a construction manager, hopefully he can look, he can look at those designs and hopefully put more realistic. You know, numbers based on their experience.
If I may ask a question, on that subject, I was gonna bring it up. Or the subject, if I may ask a question. It was my understanding in the last meeting that I attended, this controversy about the foundation. Now that it was non demo. Is there savings to the town, overall demo cost? And then all up with that. If it's, has it been deemed by the manager, project manager at that foundation, it's okay to build upon and if not. It sounded like, I heard through the grapevine, it would be very costly for that contractor to come back and do further demo of that foundation, which I feel like, if that's true.
You have more problems than that. You have problems because people in this town didn't vote or leave that old building there.
I'm kind of.
Oh, okay, I mean, I have, I have what we voted for and the only thing left should be the eighteen fifty-six building. Not the wings, not the third basement level, twenty-seven feet down from the earth now, if you look down over the edge. All of that stuff was not approved by the residents of the town, I thought we were a democracy, we voted for.
That's where I was kinda going, but spoke out and stole my thunder, but. No, sorry.
But I had it ready to go, too.
So, yes.
I mean, come on, you gotta, you gotta tell, you know, you gotta tell the people what the heck you're doing here. You, you didn't take down the additions. You said you would, right there, was voting for.
I think at the last meeting I attended, Chris said committee was gonna go back to the, the project manager getting answers. And then all of a sudden, the contractor's gone, the, and that contractor has made comments to people that he wasn't too happy with what was left and. He's asked to come back, it's gonna be an additional. One or two hundred thousand dollars, where's that money coming from?
And it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, the building committee in, in consultation were there. With the, uh, construction manager and I think the architect, they made that decision, this board didn't, didn't contribute to that discussion and. That. In the demo, and the demo contractor was very fast, so he was basically out of here and he's already on to his next job. And he, he's all set up at the Edward Middle High School now, is what he told me. So he was very quick at getting it done and they gave him an answer and he went with it and then he was gone, basically, is, is my understanding of how that transpired.
Yeah, but you could leave a foot, I mean, Kristen said she was gonna leave the footers, not the building. Leave the footers to reconstruct on top of later on when we got approval to do some reconstruction. They, yeah, they left the footers, but they also left the two stories on top of it. Almost three stories.
So who's responsible, I mean.
Committee is not responsible.
The committee's not responsible?
The committee is responsible, we're going outside the dam.
And we're supposed to be in charge of the committee. And we're supposed to be in charge of the committee?
And you're supposed to be in charge of the committee?
The buck stops here, so.
Close up though. Trust me, I'm sure.
And when it hits out there, you're going to have a lot of upset people.
It already is out there.
Well, when it hits the paper, unfortunately, it's really out there.
So it sounds like we need to have a meeting with the building committee.
It may be a good idea if you want to try to set some ground rules for how they behave.
But what do we do now?
Now, I would say that i- if the decision is made at some point to get rid of that, it's going to be on the contractor that's going to have to come in. And some of that's going to get dug up again anyway for sewer and water and all that kind of stuff, which doesn't exist in the building right now. So there will be some excavation work that's going to have to happen. And my, my assumption would be that, that, that will probably be the most cost effective way to remedy whatever you all decide you want to do on that. Bringing back the other contractor, I think would be prohibitively expensive at this time for them to remobilize. But I assume that, that the next contractor will have to have an excavator here of some kind, because even just getting that I-beam out of there, somebody's going to have to do something to get that out. I, I'm not a, I'm not a construction person, so I'm just kind of making some assumptions here. But I assume they'll have to come out here with some equipment and that would probably be less expensive to have them deal with it as part of a construction bid than, than dealing with the demo person.
I think we have to, we, we should, it'd be a good idea to have a, uh, a, uh, meeting either, you know, part of this meeting, the next meeting be dedicated to that. After our regular business meeting, have a meeting dedicated to, yes, a joint meeting dedicated to that where any questions from the public can be addressed and, and our concerns, if we have them, can be addressed. And the committee can let us know what their work, first of all, committee can let us know why they did what they did, what they're working on, what their plans are. Then questions from the public around that. And then questions that we have and whole process could take some time. So if we could have an abbreviated, as abbreviated or normal agenda as we could, and then spend as much time as we need to to address that.
Okay, I'll set that up for you next.
We really had no say. Uh, I, I wrote a number of emails to, uh, the committee, like, explaining the point of view that you were, that we didn't, we didn't approve this. If we're going to add on any kind of thing in the future that we would.
Who's the board representative to that committee?
It's Shannon.
Chris Sandmore. I go to the meetings, but I'm not a member of the meeting.
All I can see is select, select and recommend passes. And that means that you guys gave the official word to approve what was written and what's written is not what's done.
I'm sorry, but I'm glad you brought it up because I was going to end on that, was that hole.
It's dangerous.
Yes.
Right, yeah, I agree.
Load it falls eight feet, cracks its head and gets killed, that's coming on videos.
Well, it's coming on all of us.
The town.
Not me, I was thrown off the project.
Thank you. Recovered.
Okay, you're covered now. Anything else? No? Oh, so next is select board report?
Yeah, I have something, I had a suggestion, a, a comment and a, from a, from a resident, a suggestion regarding the, uh, transfer station and checking the, the passes, the cards or whatever. And, um, I thought it was a great suggestion that, uh, we move to a window, window sticker for the transfer station. So, um, I mean, we have, I'm a member of the Gardner Sportsman's Club. Every year when I pay my membership dues, I get a little bullet, bullseye that can, that I can put on my, uh, either my windshield or my rear window. We'd probably want it on a lower windshield for, for the town. Um, either that or if a person said, I don't want to put that bullseye on my windshield, then they could put it on a piece of cardboard and just lay it on the dash when they come through. And it's easily recognizable. Any of the attendants could see that, say, yep, this person's good for this year.
We used to do that.
Right.
We used to have the, right, the window dec.
Right. I'm just saying that we.
Why, why did we, why did we get away from the cost, I think?
It's the, these, this is very, very inexpensive to, to get the bolt, the little bullseyes if you don't go into great detail. So, but to finish, to carry on what I was talking about, um, also as far as, as when you would acquire them, if we were to, to standardize how we do that, instead of vehicle registration, because people register vehicles all different times of the year and sometimes online, so they don't come to the town office to register and then get that. If we sent them out, um, with the tax bill, everybody would get the sticker with their tax bill and then they could put it on their vehicle. Um, and if they needed additional stickers, they could come to the town office with their registration. Say, I need a, I need a sticker, I need a replacement sticker, I need whatever. And as far as the, 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 uh, free stuff you'd get on the back of the card, we could do something like what Green does, where the, those are available in the town office. And you come in and in Green, they charge five bucks for the, which is basically just the cost of getting the cards and managing them. And they, and you get up in Green for the five dollar purchase of that card, you get about $175 worth of, of free demo type, you know, whatever it is, computers or whatever. So however we'd want to work that, obviously it's not something we can do right now. But what I'm thinking is that we consider it for, for maybe starting this fall, we're saying, you know.
We could switch it over earlier, I think, in practice, because what we could do is we could ask people at the transfer, when they, when they, when they, when we asked them for their permit, we could be like, yeah, we're, we're swapping this out. Just keep the card for your free stuff this year. We could give them a sticker to put on right on the spot. We, we could have those at the transfer station, I think, right then and when.
Yeah, and I, I think that would eliminate having to have somebody down by the road and all they're doing is checking stickers. Anybody that comes in at that point would be going to a place where there's an attendant, the attendant could just glance at the window, windshield and say, all right, they're good.
I used to put mine on a piece of cardboard, uh, and.
Yeah, well, that's like cardboard or whatever, lay it on your dashboard and, uh, um, and just to finish that off, I also had someone say that one of the attendants was a little overly, uh, um, conscientious and actually stepped in front of their moving vehicle.
Yes, we are aware of that. We're dealing with Dan and I are, are, yes, we, we are, I'm aware of that.
So in the interest of, of safety, I would think that checking, uh, somebody's credentials is not worth getting run over, so. And I appreciate the person's diligence, but safety first.
So, has it been beat back? Has it been beat back from the attend, attendees, you know, as far as they caught several people, you know?
Yeah.
Couple of issues.
Yeah.
They did catch someone trying to dump a trailer load of washing machines recently, who did not belong to the town.
That's more, more strict, what we're doing is, excuse infiltration of surrounding towns. And yeah, it's, you catching a lot and we now have, what they are doing is they're recording how many vehicles fall and turn around, none of the numbers.
And, and just to, just for the record, the person that was talking to me about the stickers, he said absolutely no issue with checking credentials or having an identifier to make sure you're allowed. They weren't complaining about that a bit. They would just like to be able to either, you know, speed the process up a little bit and, and maybe not have to dedicate a person to checking that when you drive in.
One, one of the attendants told me, uh, something that was very trivial to me. She was, she was being called every foul name you could think of throughout her last couple of months there. And I said, well, welcome to the club, I left that job, so I don't know. She, oh yeah, that's right. Yeah, and she said every, every third or fourth person has a certain word for her. And she's been taking a lot. She was going to call it Dan, I don't know if she did or not.
She's going to put it for hazard.
Well, that's another thing, because I, I, I discussed this with Paul, it happened, it, it was drunk tape back day when I went there to, and, uh, Paul was there, so I happened to talk all this over with him. He thought it was a great idea to move to the sticker because it would, it would really cut down on the personal interaction part of it.
Didn't call the land.
Oh, whatever.
A comment on the sticker thing. I also, I live here, I also property on the coast. That St. George, go to the town office, sign ticket to the sticker. And the transfer station, only you sign it every year, pretty second process.
Yep.
It makes a difficult route out of town.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Yeah. Yep, I, I, I hear you. But it also keeps you, when you're selling that tax bill, living with, with that model, sending someone who wants eight pieces of property needs stickers.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I always think about sending it out by name. So if you're sending out eight bills to one name, that one person would get one sticker.
One in the one, or do they go with eight in the ones?
We don't do the, the bill stuffing, so it's, 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 it's a vendor, so it, it.
Maybe when they pay their.
We can figure something out.
Yeah, we'll figure something out.
Yeah.
We'll figure something out, but.
I do think.
I understand the intent.
And I'm in agreement with Harold, that, uh, certainly would simplify things quite a bit. Um, I do think that being able to empower the town employees, whether that be at the town office or the transfer station, to solve a problem before mountains, before molehills turn into mountains, um, goes quite far in that business where they're oftentimes saying no to people in a kind and respectful way, we hope. Um, or correcting people who put things in the wrong place, sometimes accidentally.
Very good.
Speak from experience.
Yes.
Anything, anything else for select board?
I've got one.
Yep.
Uh, the construction has begun on the NMS Cook, uh, boat launch. And, uh, the contractor is actually taking trees down as we speak before the restrictions on backpopping season take effect. So, uh, um, we are hopeful that, uh, we'll have a new boat launch before the end of the season.
They probably won't put the concrete in until the drawdown in the fall anyway.
Army, Army Corps says they have to wait until after, I think, July, end of July, something like that, is the first that they could get into the water. So there's some restrictions on that.
Yeah. Uh, so on to, um, on the comment.
Anybody on the.
Nope.
Nobody.
Well, there's people on, but nobody's raising their hand.
Next is to consider a letter from the Conservation Commission to landowners regarding preservation of open space and how to disseminate that information to landowners.
Mr. Wolf. You have similar letter, same attachment. I believe is an expansion of what is already in, they will report. All that is a, one of our tasks with the Conservation Commission is to. We're also tasked with defining and indexing open space. We came up with a definition of open space. Our due task. Part of it was in response to requests from the, from the corporate. With our definition of open space, during the discussions, we, we, we had Liam Trust, we had Liam from the, our Liam Trust. We had presentations to us, so. And then we, then we. And the assessor, we met with Donna. And she provided us with a list of people who actively currently participate in the various excavation programs. We have woodlot, we have fireland, we have open space. There are a lot of properties in town that would qualify, that would also help to preserve the rural character that we all cherish in our community. A lot of them, a lot of the properties are not, are not involved. There are costs if someone decides to take a property out of the program. We have fireland, we're well aware of that, people who are, who do woodlot programs are well aware of that. The open space is less than, is a handful of people participate in the open space program. But you could have a small, once filing for the maximum, you're basically in open space. Attack funds, causes if you change your mind. But it is a way to help, help preserve that rural character that we all cherish at home. Yes, there is a piece in the town report, how many town reports do we publish each year? How many are you publishing?
I don't know the exact number, but.
Couple hundred?
I, I, no, I was astonished at how many we print and, and my understand is that we run out. So people in this town still like those paper books.
Okay, I, I know like five on there as well.
Yeah, something like that.
All right, well, how many property fender, um, deeds?
There's like, um, seventeen, seventeen hundred and twenty, no.
I took, I took the assessor's information, Donna gave me all of the information on an Excel sheet. And so if you'd like that, I would love somebody to look at it. But I've sorted it in different ways by amount of acreage, um, landowner, all of those maps and, and what, all of those things you put on that, which ones are in which kind of open area. The market, you know, like Joel says, there aren't very many. But I just want to add something to the rural character. There's a certain urgency because when it's on its own, you know, one, once you put a housing development on open space, you, you can't get it back. Which is why at this point we, we'd like to go forward with it. Because we're, we still have a lot of rural land.
One of the other considerations that came in, we also met with the, um, snowmobile club. They have a huge concern because as house lots, where houses sell where they have had their trails, new owners are not receptive to keeping, keeping trail there.
You're not understanding.
So, you know, that, would this preserve the snowmobile trails, not necessarily, but it would help, but it would help. So we were figuring a way, you know, what are ways that we can get this information out? Probably it's already in the town report. We looked at doing, we priced out bulk mailing.
How much was that, Joel? Should be able to offer around $12,000 bucks.
That's, yeah, that was, but the other part is, is permanent to me use.
Oh, that's a permit.
Does the town, does the town have a, a mail permit?
They used to.
Do, I don't know if they do now. That was, that was one of the questions that we didn't have any answer to.
So when we discussed this before, you said you sorted it. So you now know which properties this is relevant for? Because like sending this to a one acre house lot isn't really worth the time of the postage, I wouldn't think. But if it's, if it's, if it's a property that might be actually eligible for this, then it would be worth sending them something. Yep, okay.
What?
Which will be very helpful. Which will be very helpful.
Ordinary open space has no law on it. Except that you still have to maintain the point nine one acre.
House lot.
House lot.
Yeah.
Anything above that, but I mean, so many of that's more along the middle.
Right, because the tax savings is so insignificant that it doesn't.
And just back to the snowmobiles, I mean, that's, I mean, we all know, that's a huge civic organization, very. And they came to us last summer and asked if we would help them keep their trails. And we actually don't have any authority to do that. But we thought this was the best in what we could have.
I will point out that we have a significant amount of money in the Whittier Woods Fund and that would be appropriate to use for mass mailing for this type. That would not be outside the scope of what that money has been earmarked for.
That money is earmarked for work at Whittier Woods.
We we've used it before for conservation things outside of Whittier Woods. Not huge things, but small things. And it has been used before by a vote of the select board. So support that once you're in the title thing you're talking about.
We could probably, and now that they've shrunk down the list, I don't, I don't think it would be a big problem for us to mail this out with our normal postage budget that we have. I don't, I don't have any big concern about the money.
Yeah, if you're only doing five hundred. If you're only doing five hundred mailings, that's not terrible.
Right, yeah, it's not that.
Well, if we take, there are four hundred and twenty four properties over, over twenty five acres.
Okay, yeah.
So, and we need to go down along that.
But if we were to back out people who are already in fireland and tree growth, that's, that's probably a couple hundred, that's probably a hundred of that from that list.
So you might do seven hundred fifty mailings, it's sixty cents a mailing, you know, roughly half of that, so you're looking at four hundred dollars maybe.
I mean, I I agree with you.
I'm just spitballing.
We can consider doing anything five acres or above. Have to sort it because we do have people who have multiple properties. They don't need to get, if they have three properties, they don't need to get three apps.
We can handle this kind of expenses, just if you just give me an indication that you're okay with it, we can, we can move forward.
You can do it by consensus.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with it.
It's well under my purchasing authority and so it's not, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
I don't see a problem.
That's, it's good information.
Good information. Some people may take advantage of it, I don't think a lot will, but some people may.
What do you want? What do you additional want?
And if you watch some history on the farm program, the Ordnance at La Matas, I have all the information on that, I helped pass that.
One of the, we did, we had actually put in a request to that altered because of the way our, our own structure, it cannot be.
I don't know if that's true, I think it probably could be altered, but it would have to be, it would have to be done as a warrant.
What they wanted, what they wanted to do, Tim, was they wanted to give the select board the authority to issue those and you can't under state statute, it has to be the town meeting. Right, yeah. Because there are some other towns that have councils and they can do it if you, if you have a council hall like Winslow, their council approves those things. They were trying to streamline it, but we just can't the way we're set up.
No, I, we went all through that, I was very familiar.
Yeah, I'm sure.
You're all, you're.
Good, good C activity.
Yeah, that'd be great, to make it very easy that way. Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
Appreciate your work.
Yeah.
The next thing, I will comment, the next thing we're doing, where we got clarification on you understand, I didn't understand. Because it doesn't show in the town report to us that over twenty thousand dollar number. Our records from the town office was down underneath thousand dollars.
What's, what's the actual balance that we have in reserve? I mean, we just, I'm pretty sure that we approved the warrant item that creates a reserve account, you know, carry those funds over.
Right, so we will carry forwards and it'll be easier to track that way.
Yeah, and so what is the, what is the balance that we would?
Twenty three thousand.
Yeah, as of the last audit, we had it was twenty three.
That's what I saw.
So why is it only eight thousand now?
No, no, that was our understanding, that's what the town log is introducing to us.
Oh, I see, they provide the wrong bigger deal.
Well, that was as of the last audit, which is two years ago, so it could be lower than that.
It could be depending if anything is.
The fault that may have contributed to that misunderstanding.
I mean, there may have been a few thousand dollars come out of that, but it wasn't a huge amount.
Correct, but there may have been some, because where most of the paid for rent money. That's correct, because the way rent money was handled.
A double negative instead of.
Yeah.
A negative and a credit.
You know where that money came from?
Yes.
It came from a cutting.
Yes.
And that woods will be eligible for another cutting in about
six years.
I was gonna say five, but six sounds like, I know it was five or six.
We actually checked. It was, yeah, there's a forest plant. Because of the terminal ash ore threat to have it evaluated, since you don't have a higher concentration of ash. You don't have a good market for that. Building wants a lot of watch holds. So it meant a hundred year trees for harvesting versus fifty seven.
Okay, on to warrant number twenty two.
Almighty Waste School Demolition, this is one of the payments, one hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars. Bernstein Shore, it's our attorney, one thousand forty one dollars. Blue Rock Earthworks Recycling, two thousand six hundred and fifteen. Charter Communications, this is the, this is the new internet service that is in this building, is my understanding, one thousand two hundred and fifty eight dollars and six seven cents. Main Waste to Energy, one thousand nine hundred and twenty one. Northeast Emergency Apparatus, helmets, fronts and foam, that's what, that's my description. Okay, two thousand three hundred and twenty nine dollars. Regional School Unit Two, four hundred and forty nine thousand two hundred and twenty five. Treasurer State Domain for Motor Vehicles, nine thousand three hundred and fourteen and seven thousand one hundred and forty three. And Treasurer State Domain for IFNW related items, seven thousand one hundred and sixty five.
Will we approve the warrant?
Second. Motion by Harold, second by Kent to approve warrant number twenty two. All those in favor?
Will we adjourn?
By Harold, seconded by Kent.